I'm going to call the meeting to order. We're going to move into executive session. Chair wants to take a motion to move into executive session for reason three, which is contract negotiations.
So moved?
Sorry, a second. It requires a formal vote. Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and we will reconvene to our regular meeting. Thank you. That's quick. I'll call the meeting back to order, and I would ask anyone who's able to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public, which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Hello, everybody. Next piece on our agenda is public comment. Does anyone wish to speak on anything not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no one, I will move on. Discussion items. Mr. McCarthy.
Congratulations to the girls soccer and volleyball teams for clinching tournament births. Good luck to the field hockey team on their senior night tomorrow at four, as they try and clinch a tournament berth with a win over Sturgis East. And boys soccer also has their senior night game tomorrow at Baddest Field at 6:30 against West Bridgewater. The Unified Basketball Team is off to a hot start, improving to three and oh with a win over Seconk today. Thank you to all of the fans, cheerleaders, concert choir, and band members for making the first home game against Dayton Rehoboth, a special one. Last week was homecoming week. Congratulations to Bridget Lynch and Logan Dooherty for winning homecoming queen and king. And also, congratulations to the class of 2019 for winning the float building competition. The class of 2023 came up for a visit last Wednesday and got tours of the building from student leaders, as well as watched the "Choice is Yours" video. The decision as to where one goes to high school is a big one, and we hope they choose MHS. The annual charity dinner last week raised over $1,000 to benefit the Dana Farber Cancer Institute. Thank you to the entire community for supporting. And Student Council's annual Halloween Fun Fest is next Monday, October 29th, from 6 to 8 in the MHS cafeteria. Kids are welcome to play games, dance, and make crafts in their costumes for some candy. Thank you.
I wanted to give a little feedback, if I could, regarding the students coming up from the middle school. And between the tour guides and everything that went on there, my daughter thought it was the most awesome thing, and she's excited, actually, to go the next year. She's ready to go. I said, "It's October." But I would give feedback if it was otherwise, but I got to tell you, she was so excited. That's a testament to what goes on, what you guys do, what you guys do, all the pieces that are there. So I was so happy to hear. Because I was worried that she was going to be a little more apprehensive, but she wasn't. Even the tour guides are really good, so, awesome.
Any other questions for Owen? I know Owen has to take off after this because he's off to the girls soccer game. But I do want to make a comment, and that is, for those of you who don't know, Mr. McCarthy does quite a bit at Middleborough High School, and I think he should be recognized over and over again, aside from sitting here with us and all the other things we've all seen him do. He's added this year, because it's a senior year, and I know he's been part of decorating a variety of events, including homecoming. But more importantly, he also jumped to be a participant and help with the Unified Basketball Team. And so I know we're going to talk about that a little later, Owen, but I really want to thank you, because it's people like you who really make, you know, Middleborough a better place, not just Middleborough High School, but Middleborough as a town and a community. And you should really be proud of yourself for going above and beyond, over and over and over again. And Brian and I have both sat on this committee with you for three years, and again and again you have always stepped up for the school system and for this community, and I can't thank you enough.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Owen, and enjoy the girls' game. Thank you.
Stay warm.
Next item on our agenda is reports from school committee members. Does any school committee members have anything they wish to talk about? The only thing I wish to just mention again to the community, since we won't see them, November 6th is election day. Please get out. We will be closed for school. There'll still be professional development for the teachers, but please get out and vote, no matter what you believe. It's important to get out and vote, and so I want to mention that to people.
I think early voting ends tomorrow.
Yes. And also, I should also mention that there will be a Veterans Day Parade, because I don't think we'll be in session until after the Veterans Day Parade. And, you know, for people who gave so much, it's the least we can do to make sure we either head out to downtown to watch the parade, or when weather's been bad, it's always been moved into the Town Hall Rotunda. And so please stop by. A lot of the kids from the schools do a great job as being part of the bands, to be a part of it. But I think, you know, I wanted to bring up those two things.
Mr. Chair, our middle school and high school bands participate in that parade, and we also have several students who are involved in other community organizations, such as the scouting, who do participate in the parade. So it's a great opportunity. Rain or shine, really, the high school band does play inside the auditorium if it is pouring rain and they cancel the parade. Unfortunately, the last couple of years, we've had a couple of cancellations, so hopefully they'll have the parade outside. It's always a little bit better when they have the parade and the Memorial Day Assembly.
Mr. Oakley?
Just want to say, early voting will be on Saturday also, from 11 to 1, Town Hall Annex Building.
And you should know, because the Borough Bot is in the same building as-
That's true, but also I'm voting on that day, so it's fresh in my mind.
Any other things? Then I will move on. Mr. Catino, you are up next, and thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Frank.
I have a tendency to vote on voting day because my precinct votes at the high school, so it's real easy for me. Although I walk out the front door around and go in through the gym, and then when I don't cut through, because you're not supposed to do that, I don't want the police to get mad at me, so. So I have something that I've handed out to all of you, and I want to just kind of read through some of my bulleted statements and talk about a resolution that I'd like you to consider. So the Middleborough Education Association is asking you, the school committee of the town of Middleborough, to support a resolution urging the legislature to approve a new foundation budget formula that will increase public funding for public schools across Massachusetts. The resolution reads as follows. Whereas free public schools available to all students without exception are foundational to our democracy and required by the state constitution. And whereas all of our students, no matter where they live, deserve high-quality public schools that teach the whole child and provide them with a rich school experience that addresses their academic, social, and emotional needs. Whereas the state's foundation budget formula, which determines state aid to each district, has been woefully out of date for years, thereby underfunding our districts by more than $1 billion a year for essential educational services. And whereas an updated foundation budget formula would bring the Middleborough Public Schools up to $628,250 in additional aid each year, allowing this district to move closer to providing all students with the education to which they are entitled as residents of the Commonwealth. And whereas the legislature failed to pass any foundation budget legislation in the last session, leaving districts, educators, and students without the funds necessary to support the schools our students deserve in every district in the state. Therefore, the school committee of the town of Middleborough urges the legislature to approve and fully fund a new foundation budget formula by May 1st, 2019. That would be the resolution. The Foundation Budget Review Committee actually recommended changes that would increase the Chapter 70 funding of the town of Middleborough by about, I had rounded it to $625,000, but the exact figure which was provided to the MTA was $628,250. And that's funding would be by 2023. And I applaud the school committee and the town for what they've done in regards to maximizing the use of the available funds that are spent towards the education of the students in the town. We all know that there are always items that get cut during the budget process. Having enough funds available to meet the needs of the students of the town is always a struggle. While the increase is only a fraction of the current total budget, I am confident that the school committee would put the extra funds to very good use. We all want the students to have the best possible education that we can provide, and the district has made great strides. All problems cannot be solved through the budget process. The average expenditure, but the average expenditure per student of the top school districts in the state, and I averaged the top 20 school districts based on their assessment formulas, we fall about $2,500 below the average, consistent, for what they spend on schools. Now, the $628,000 is not going to be everything that we would ever want, but at least it would start to help. And what we were asking is for you to consider the resolution that I have presented to you or a similar alternate resolution that you craft yourselves within a timeframe that's in accordance with your normal procedures for actually having resolutions voted on. And that's what I have. Do you have any questions?
You sent that to me today, so I did forward everything to the school committee earlier in the day, so thank you very much.
I figured I could get some printed out versions.
No, no, that's perfect.
Yeah, I appreciate you.
Because what we can do is, we will put it on our next agenda to take a vote on. Now, the thing I just wanted to tell you was, this committee has supported the Foundation Budget Review Commission in the past. That was one of the resolutions at Massachusetts School Committee Association last year, and I, as the delegate, voted to support that and informed the school committee afterwards. I sort of have right to make decisions in the moment that the school committee has given me, but that was one. And the superintendent and I had gone to a Mass Association of School Committees and Mass Association of Superintendent workshop on the Foundation Budget Review, and I know that both of us had obviously liked what they had done. I had also been a part of meeting with the Foundation Review Budget previously when they were doing their review and providing input. So I think this is fantastic, Frank, and I think this will, I don't have any issue with this, and I will bring this to the committee at the next meeting.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Through you.
The Mass School Administrators Association, the Massachusetts Association of School Business Officials, the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, along with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, have all supported the Foundation Budget and this initiative to right the ship with regard to a budget.
Mr. Chair? I'll forward you a copy of this February 5th, 2015 letter that was sent out to the Honorable Sonia Chang Diaz, who chaired that committee, which we went in there and we pretty much said the exact same thing we're saying here, but I'll forward it, so you have a copy of that. I don't know if you had a copy of it. But it pretty much talks about, I think the best one was reformulating, because they were talking about either reformulating or adding more. Well, reformulating the money is divided amongst, how money is divided amongst school districts is tantamount to rearranging the deck furniture on the Titanic. We need to permanently repair the hole before the ship sinks. And the real question is, how do we fix the hole in a sinking ship, as we referred to this whole problem? And the two possible answers are increased funding or decrease expenses through reduction of mandates and regulation. I mean, you've got to do one or the other. To free up more money, either stop 50 tests that are going on, maybe make it, pare it down to the ones you really need, or give us the additional funding. So I'll forward this off to you as well, so you have that, as well as I'll send it out to all of us, so we have it.
I do recognize that the school committee in the past has supported the changes in the foundational budget, and I remember very, very well Mr. Giavononi's arguments and support of changing, or at least supporting reviewing the foundational budget in the past and pushing forward with this sort of stuff. Your support of that is well-recognized, and had I, you know, and that, you know, kind of contributed to, you know, when I received this, to say, "Hey, you know, let's get," now, there's been about, you know, 10 or 15 school districts already that have already passed these resolutions, and as you say, it's something that's being recommended across the board from all of your organizations, plus my organization. It's definitely something that I think is just going to help overall the state. I mean, we're looking, I'm looking at ads for Charlie Baker on television bragging about the billion dollars that we have in surplus. Well, let's fund some education.
This is a very good time, because no matter what party you belong to, or views you have, there are going to be 100 brand-new legislators in the Massachusetts State Legislature this year. And if you think about it from this perspective, there will be at least two new legislators from Middleborough alone. And so I think it's incumbent upon, you know, it's sort of, there's a large percentage moving out. January is when bills can be filed, and they start anew, and it sort of makes sense to make sure that people understand what our position is.
Absolutely, because I actually had the opportunity last week, actually, a week and a half ago, to ask the governor specifically about the transportation bills that are going to DCF. So, as he put it, there was money in the budget that they had put in, yet didn't get approved by the legislature. I said, "Why don't you just rescind the letter from January of 2018 and let us go billing the other school district?" I said, "There's a lot of things you could do." I go, "Let's just keep an eye on these little things, because as we, as a district, have to make the decision of whether we continue to provide school security offices or pay the transportation bills that are being mandated to us," which we didn't willingly accept under McKinney-Vento when that vote was taken, because I made the motion, "we are not getting funding for an unfunded mandate." And at some point, I hope we'll get some kind of resolution from the state auditor on that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm just fortunate that Frank mentioned the town of Middleborough, because the town of Middleborough has gone beyond the net school spending required each year for the school system, so they spend more. The town of Middleborough has supported a brand-new high school, so we're happy with the town of Middleborough. We're not, this is not a disagreement with the town of Middleborough. This is a state funding formula that is controlled by the state legislature, and like I said, Middleborough has certainly done its share, the town, has done its share to support education.
There's no doubt that the town does quite a lot to support education. I mean, without the support of the town, we wouldn't have a one-to-one initiative up at the high school, one-to-one initiative at the middle school. You know, and those are, you know, moving our students forward, but additional funding from the state to help close some of these other gaps that keep popping up, that would be helpful.
Any other questions?
Mr. Catino, thank you. This looks good. It seems like something I would support when I get the chance to vote on it. I just wondered, is this, when we vote on this, is this something to be used to urge our legislators to create a resolution and-
Well, it's to urge the legislature to pass what they didn't last year. The foundation budget changes came up, and it was one of the things that they let die, so to speak. They didn't address it. They could have, but they chose not to at that point in time, so it's urging them to bring that back up again and pass the recommendations of the Foundation Budget Review Commission, so.
Should we add a piece to this when we get to it? That might say something in order of, "Since this isn't an election year, you can do this."
Exactly. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Catino. I will definitely have this on the agenda for next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the superintendents report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, members of the audience. My report tonight focuses on a number of activities going on in the school system. I would invite Mr. Paul Brannigan and Mr. Ryan Sylvia up to the microphones to talk about items one and two, which is our homecoming week celebration, really, at Middleborough High School and the town. Some of the events, so they can highlight some of the events and some of the things that went on. We also have the Unified Sports Update. Just to give you an idea, a number of us had a chance to attend that game and participate in a standing ovation for that group of students. So, gentlemen, you have the floor, if you'd like to just sort of discuss some of the activities of homecoming and the Unified Sports. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. First and foremost, we had a, really, an exciting week at the high school last week with our homecoming week, and when there was a scenario that was presented to us in regards to having to have our football game on a Friday night, one, at first it was, that was a conflict, because we've always done it on a Saturday, and it needs to be a Saturday, because that's the tradition of our homecoming. But then it really, we realized that it really became an opportunity for us to really rethink how we do homecoming and creating new traditions, but also embracing the things we've always done. So, working collaboratively with Ryan and actually with the student groups, that we collaborated to kind of bring together our unified student group that we have, our Club Us. It brings all of our sports teams, captains, and activity presidents, and we have a team of about maybe 60 kids or so that meet with us periodically to really talk about how to unify our students even more. And they really became a charge of really what homecoming could be, beyond just the student council planning it, which is really quite exciting. It really became an approach to make sure that every one of our sports teams was part of that week, besides the random big game in the middle of the week, if it happened of it, and really creating some new opportunities. Between our theme days, our talent show, we incorporated the concert choir into the week, which was nice, because now you're giving activity every night of the week for students, but also you're allowing other groups to have a part of that big week of the school. The talent show, we had our Unified Sports basketball game, which I'll have Ryan speak to, because what a day that was. Our homecoming dinner was held on Thursday night, and the students raised over $1,000 for the Dana Farmer Cancer Institute. And having all of our sports teams and families and community members come to that dinner, the cafeteria was packed, which was wonderful. Friday was our parade down to Baddest Field, which actually we thought was going to be really early, which ended up being perfect timing to then bridge all of the senior events of celebrating our cheerleaders and our football team, our band and majorettes in the pre-game and during this game ceremony of the football game Friday night. And then, of course, we had the dance on Saturday, but really a new tradition that got started, which was really quite exciting, was all the Saturday games, which I'll have Ryan speak to, but also the community feel of that morning between our soccer teams and field hockey playing, but then also the food trucks that we brought in and the vendors that came in to be a part of that day. It was a nice crowd for a really first-time event to do at the high school. And really, the vision of it is, is that with the new high school coming, that area of the property between the high school and the stadium really could lend itself to really have some really great community events, especially around homecoming, because we are self-contained, and it gave a nice little test run of what could be. So we had well over 600 students at the dance, and when you think of our school population, that's almost every kid was at that dance, and it was really a wonderful, wonderful week. So a thank you to the students who were involved, but really a thank you to Ryan and his collaboration to really bring all of our athletics together, to work collaboratively with the activity side of the building, to really ensure that it was a week for all. So I'll have Ryan talk a little bit about the kind of other nuances of that.
Sure. I think one of the things I always try to instill in our teams is, one of the signs of a successful athletic program is the extent that we support each other, and that gave us an opportunity. Having those Saturday games gave us an opportunity for, it's not all about just everyone going to watching the football game on Friday night, it's about the football players and the cheerleaders coming back and watching some soccer and watching some field hockey. We made an effort to have a few other games, like volleyball and cross-country, we're not able to compete on those days. They competed earlier in the week and at other times, but I think it just gives us a chance in the future to kind of look at it and do even more planning and really, you know, extend it a little bit more and get even more student athletes involved on that one, that homecoming day. So it was actually fun to work with, it was really fun to work with Paul and that Club Us and let them kind of come up with the ideas of bringing the food trucks in. And I want to definitely thank Sean Siciliano for helping out with, you know, we're setting up speakers, and we got the concert choir out there singing the National Anthem on a Saturday morning. Mr. Breen was the announcer, just like he was for the football game, so it was just a good feel all around.
A big highlight of the week was our team-unified game.
Yeah, so the Unified Basketball Game was the Thursday before the Friday night football game, and through the planning process, we got the cheerleaders on board to cheer at the event, we got the concert choir again. I think the concert choir sang Thursday night, Friday night, and Saturday morning National Anthem, so that was pretty cool. And we had, because we had some other games going on on that Thursday, we weren't able to get the band there, but we're hoping for our next home game. We'll have the band at the unified game as well. And it was, the theme coming from Club Us and student council was a pink-out for October for breast cancer awareness, so there was, you know, a lot of pink in the gym, and it was packed, and it was just a good feeling all around. And as far as an update, kind of just to go further, I think that the update for Unified Sports was the agenda item, and really, the only update is just being thankful that we have the opportunity and that we have the support of the school committee and the school district to offer this type of program for the student athletes that are participating in it. We have 13 students on the team, there's a maximum of 15. Four of those students are partners, what we call partners, so they're student athletes who are assisting with the athletes that are on the team. And Owen was here, he's one of those partners, we have three others, and they're doing a great job, and they really lead the way. Also, the coaches, Ash Baron as an assistant coach, Andy Deisel as an assistant coach, and then Jason Carroll as the head coach, and they've all been doing a great job. They practice two days a week, just for an hour after school, as we discussed kind of earlier when we proposed this team, 2:15 to 3:15, and they have five games total, three away, and two home games. And so they had their second away game today at Seconk, and we have our next home game, mark your calendars, is going to be Wednesday, November 7th. That's a 4 o'clock game against Dartmouth High School, and we're hoping to make it another big event, and we want as much support as we can get from the students in the school and anybody, really, who wants to come. It's one of those events where if, once you get there and you see the smiles on the kids' faces and how excited they are to be participating in a sport and getting the support from their classmates, it just puts a smile on your face, it's a great feeling. Well, the next season that Paul and I have talked about is Special Olympics offers unified track and field. There's a little bit of a challenge with that in our current situation with us losing the track this spring. But I have kind of explored some options with some neighboring schools and seeing if that's a possibility of maybe combining a couple of days a week and seeing if that's an option. We do have Bachi already, Mr. Brannigan got going before I was here, but definitely, I think, and the other side, too, of expanding this program is, what I've learned is, some school districts have, they allow you to have multiple teams. So the limit you can have on this team is 15 students combined with partners and athletes, but you can have multiple teams, and they can all practice together, and you might have a back-to-back game on the days you have games, where you have an A-team and a B-team. So there's no limit in terms of, you know, how many, you know, I mean, I don't think we're going to have more than, you know, 30, 40, 50 kids on a basketball team, but as many as we can fit on the bus, and we'll send them to an away game and let them play.
I just want to say a couple of things. One, I want to thank the superintendent, too, because, you know, the superintendent has his duty, but he's also at the homecoming game on Friday night, and he was there the entire time for Saturday, selling, so I appreciate that.
Well, you need to clarify. My daughter was selling. I assisted.
You were overseeing, sort of, but that homecoming Saturday was fantastic, and the food trucks and just- the food trucks and just parent after parent talking to me, telling me how wonderful it was, how much they enjoyed it, and even from the other team. They didn't enjoy the beating we gave them in soccer, but they, they, they enjoyed being there and thought it was fun and, and talked about, like, why can't we do this at our school? So, I thought that was great. The other thing I can say about the Unified Game was, that was just fantastic. I've been to quite a few games. I know occasionally I get in trouble with referees, but I've never been to a game where no matter what side you were on, the entire stands were rooting every kid every time, and it was just unbelievable. And it just, it cracked me up because Ryan read sort of the rules that we always read at the beginning of every game, which goes over that we're, you know, we're here, you know, you can't harass refs and everything like that, sportsmanship. And then it was, it was just a fantastic feeling about how, how each of those kids were treated and how excited they were, you know, that everyone was just going nuts for them. It was fantastic. And so, I just want to thank you both. I want to thank you for, Brian, for bringing the idea to us and allowing us to do that because, in my mind, quite frankly, with the exception of working on the high school, that Unified Basketball Team is one of the things I'm most proud of that we, as a committee, decided to do because I think that's just fantastic.
Thanks. It's a team effort. I mean, there's, there are a lot of people, so, you know, Mr. Brannigan and I worked together to get it going, and there's a lot of people volunteering their time to make sure it happens, so it's, it's just a, a great thing all around.
I'll be at the school committee conference, so I would recommend to everybody to go out and just sit in the gym and be, and watch it because it's fantastic. It was, it was great. I do have some issues with Mr. Dizell's coaching, but aside from that, I did tell him that already, so I feel good about that.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Next on my agenda, Mr. Chair, is, is a note with regard to the Summer Smart Reading Challenge, and we have some grant winners. Received a letter from Deb Walgreen, who's the librarian here at the Nichols Middle School. It's, I just wanted to tell you a little bit about Deb. She volunteered to do this program and, and put it in place. Deb's maiden name is Nichols, and she's one of the Tiger Nichols, who the school is named after. She's one of Tiger Nichols Children, who's also a librarian here, so a little particular flair to that. And she wrote me a note in October saying, "Brian, dear Brian, I just want to share some positive news about our school and about a particular student at Nichols Middle School, Anna Dufrain. This past summer, some of our students took part in the Summer Reading Challenge by using an online program called Readocity that I shared with them in May. Approximately two hundred of Nichols students created a profile and some of them logged in over the summer. As a result, the total of sixty-four thousand minutes of reading took place by the students who participated, making them the winners of the contest in their category. Anna, a current seventh grader, won the challenge in the individual category, reading one thousand eight hundred and twenty-five minutes. Of the seventeen schools in Massachusetts who participated in the contest, we came out on top and will receive a one thousand dollar grant. I have attached a copy of the Herald article, which ran in this, this past Sunday's Boston Herald. We are very excited and proud of the efforts by our students who participated." Also, a letter from Julie DiFrancesco, who's the head of the Mass Literacy Foundation, and is addressed to Ms. Walgreen. "Dear Ms. Walgreen, congratulations to the students at John T. Nichols Junior Middle School for winning the 2018 Summer Smart Reading Challenge. Your school logged more reading minutes on average per student than any other school in the state. We are thrilled that your students were able to achieve such success. Enclosed, please find your grant check for one thousand dollars, which is to be used for the school library at John T. Nichols Junior Middle School. Sincerely, Julie DiFrancesco, Mass Literacy Director." So, big congratulations to the students who participated at Nichols Middle School, Anna Dufrain, the student that won, and I would recommend that at a future school committee meeting, we have Anna join us and we can congratulate her personally.
Sure.
Moving on, Mr. Chair, I would invite Mrs. Donnie Jamison, who's the current Assistant Principal of Middleborough High School, one of the two Assistant Principals of the Middleborough High School. Her role also in the community is to work with the, what's called the Middleborough Matters Group. It is a grant-based group which is tasked with drug and alcohol awareness and prevention, and she is a member of the committee. Greg Thomas is a member of the committee. Our police chief and fire chief are members of the committee. The chairman of the school committee is a member, I am a member, but they are part of the working group, and they are the ones that do the yeoman's work with this grant. This grant is funded by pretty much application, but to complete an application, we have to have data. And to complete that data, to gain that data, to gain an understanding of where we stand in the town, we need to survey our students, and that's why Donnie's here today to sort of explain a, a process by which we need to survey our students. So, Ms. Jamison, welcome.
Thank you. I want to thank you for hearing this tonight. It's important work that this entire committee's done. SAPSI is a Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition. That who, that is who brought us the grant. We're in our third year, so we've done a lot of work and we work with Plymouth and Carver collectively, so that's who's in the grant. We did a survey in 2016, actually this week, 2016, on alcohol use and knowledge, and marijuana use and knowledge for the entire high school. It was a twenty-minute survey, it was paper and pencil, but it was done out of UMass Amherst, their Health and Wellness, because we can't pay for a, we can't pay for a survey because then it certainly, it would be skewed. So, UMass has paired with us so that they are giving us a survey through their statistical programming, and they do everything for us, which is extremely helpful. So, we did that survey, and there, there are results for that, which I don't want to share right now, but we have them available for you if you would like them. And that has driven the work that the Middleborough Matters and Sachem Supporters, which is the, the high school group, has used to drive what they've done. They did a sticker shot campaign, they did some literature home to juniors and seniors about what the social host law means, so if families are hosting parties and serving alcohol. So, they've done, and many, many other things. They invited Mara Haley to come talk to them at the high school when she came. I mean, there's a whole host of things that have happened. We'd like to do the survey again, and we'd like to do it very soon because now we are pre, we were pre-legal marijuana use and now we are post. So, we want to know what these kids are thinking about the same questions and what their thoughts are, and what, it's also asks what their family's thoughts are and what their friends' thoughts are. So, it's pretty in-depth, even though it's only about thirty questions. It is a very in-depth survey, asking them about how old were they if they ever used it, if they've never used it, how old were some of their friends, what do they know about family use? And this particular survey increased the questions by about five or six to ask what they know about medical marijuana and potential usage in their family or guardians or even friends. So, it's going to take it to that next level. It'll be the first survey in the state to have that information. So, we would like to do that. Carver did it today. I don't know the date of the Plymouth, when they're doing it, but if possible, the high school could facilitate this as early as next week.
Please, Mr. Chair. This data then comes to the committee.
It comes right to the committee.
And then, next steps.
Next steps. So, the SAPSI, so, works directly with High Point, which works directly with the Health Department of the state. So, it would go to the state. It would be the only data they have right now covering this. So, it would drive our next steps as a committee for Middleborough Matters on what, the grant starts off with underage drinking and that knowledge, and then goes to marijuana use and then opioid use. So, it would bring potential more programming. We have brought speakers to the high school, we're planning to bring more. We have Hidden in Plain Sight, I don't know if you walked by it, but it's down here tonight, and the funding that the kids have raised helped pay to purchase that, so we own it. So, Middleborough, Plymouth, and Carver own that, so we can take it anywhere, anytime, and it's been very well received by parents and guardians. It's exceptionally powerful. So, those are the things that we can do, and we can raise more funding, and we can include more community members, and we're having a community forum the first week in November at the YMCA also to share resources. It's about sharing resources and knowledge.
Chair? Yeah. Now, this is one hundred percent anonymous too, right? So, right.
Hundred percent, and that's why it's interesting you asked that question. They tried to do this in another district online, which we know, right, kids are great on that. A lot of kids refused to do it because of the IP address, they were afraid it could be traced to them, which I totally respect. So, UMass Amherst was wonderful in understanding that, and so it is a paper and pencil, and Marielle Paul, who's actually here tonight, is the director. She will come and secure the documents, deliver them to the high school, and then they will be, they will leave the school that day.
I like, I like the question, and they need to be asked. They need to be asked. You're going to start, are you going to go all the way down to just the high school or are you going to go down to broach the middle school?
This particular survey to match the 2016 would be just the high school. Not to say UMass may not approach us at another time because we do recognize that middle school kids and families need this information.
And then, you'll get into opioids, and maybe the subsequent questionnaire?
I don't know the answer to that. The grant, the grant is driven by underage drinking and marijuana use, but certainly we can, we have tons of resources for opioid addiction or families who need help.
And that's been a question since the very beginning about opioids when this program started, which was the understanding, the grant is the grant, and we have to maintain the, what the grant asks us to do, but there has always been pieces about that. Donnie, the only thing I'd like to say is, I would add that I think it's important to do the middle school, primarily because I'd like to see how things change when they get to the high school, if their opinions of things change over the two years or whatever and, and that kind of thing. So, I think that would be good, but.
Do you want to vote on this, Donnie, for support?
I'd be comfortable with that. I think, and then when we, when we tell parents it's coming, we could, that could be part of our correspondence.
Wait a second. Discussion. They're over chat.
Well, maybe this is better luck for after the vote.
I was just curious, I walked by the display out there, what is that?
So, Hidden in Plain Sight is, is an average teenager or pre-teen bedroom. So, when you walk in, it's only for adults, kids are not welcome to go in. And Marielle would show you where, Hidden in Plain Sight, are the things that you might need to see that could relate to drug or alcohol use slash abuse. So, there's a water bottle in there, and unfortunately, some of these items you would see in there are, are bought on the internet and online. There's a water bottle that the bottom screws off and things are hidden in there. There are slidens into your shoes where things can be hidden under what would look like a gel insole, and there's a pocket where something could be hidden. There's belts that have pockets where capsules could be placed. So, sometimes recommendations are given to families that you need to go home and really examine your, your child's room. Although it's their space, it's still in your home, and we have to have those honest conversations, and parents need the tools to know what they're looking for. And it's, it's a difficult conversation, but it really helps a lot of parents go home and start that conversation to happen, so.
Hidden pieces, you know, there's kids who dump out mouthwash and replace mouthwash with alcohol, and so, you know, it, same green, they can keep it out in the open, as it says, hide in plain sight, which is, allows people just to, you know, it's just about what people do and how people do things and to be more observant of what happens.
And I remember an event sponsored, I think it was Middleborough Matters sponsored it, and they talked about not just finding it and you not, need to have a plan. You don't just all of a sudden go and say, "Get out, get over here," you know, you can't do that, you can't yell at a, you need a plan. So, this is the first step, but you also need to plan at that moment before you do the confrontation part because it could go diverging horribly, so, which is one of the things you don't want to have happen, but.
There's a lot of, there are a lot of state resources that are hard to locate if you don't know what you're looking for. And we've also been working with the Council on Aging to help grandparents who are raising younger students in, in giving them supports and knowledge. So, that's the next community forum following the one in November.
And the other thing I want to add too is, time and time again, there's been programs and presentations for adults, and, you know, to have this conversation, this is just not about conversations only with kids. This has been about having conversations with adults too. Unfortunately, at times it hasn't been as well-attended as I think we'd all like to see. But again, you know, we know the community has a drug and alcohol problem, as all communities do, and that's why we want people to be aware and to be able to have conversations with their children. Rich?
One follow-up. I'm absolutely in support, and when we vote in a second, you'll see, but I, I would echo Mr. Young's comments about if, I know the grant drives this, but if there's any way we could get middle school data, I'd, I'd be really interested in seeing that as well. Like you said, just so we have that chance at follow-up, but, yeah, thank you.
A new health teacher from the middle school has joined Middleborough Matters, so I'm hoping that we won't overwhelm him right away, but I'm hoping he can, he can help us, yeah, he can help us derive something to start, at least maybe even an introductory survey, and then we can carry it over for the number of years that would be appropriate, so. You're welcome.
So, we'll make sure we notify the school before we do something like that.
So, I do have a table and a second to support Middleborough Matters in doing, doing the conversation with the kids in the form of a questionnaire. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Genereous? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Donnie, and thank you for all the work you do on this committee.
Donnie, I do want to say one thing too. Just in case people missed it, one of the great things I, I thought that happened this year that Donnie did was, prior to prom season, there was a letter that was sent home to parents, signed from essentially everybody in the community who had an important role, like the police chiefs, the principals, the town manager, just reminding parents about their responsibility with drinking and having, and hosting parties. And I thought that was fantastic, and I, you know, a lot of, a lot of schools, as we know, have made a requirement for parents to attend if their child wants to go to the prom. But I thought this was a, sort of a more open way and a way in which to let people know when they were mailed home to everybody, they weren't.
They were mailed home to all juniors and seniors, and we weren't sure, Mr. Brannigan and Mr. Dizell and I, if we'd get any pushback or if we would offend any families, and we didn't receive one phone call about anything, about any feelings negative in any way. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
And again, for your participation and also your leadership on that committee because there has been some turbulent times in its life, that, that committee, and, and we thank you for, for being a part of that, being a constant part of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Next, Mr. Chair, I would invite Dr. Melanie Gates up to the table, and she has a couple of items to give you updates or provide updates for you. The first is English language learners, and the second is a homeschool update. The first with English language learners, she's going to plug in. And Dr. Gates, the floor is yours if you're so ready.
Thank you, Superintendent Lynch and School Committee. We'll start with talking about our English language learner program. Just to give you a little bit of flavor for what English language learning program looks like here in Middleborough, we utilize a sheltered English immersion approach where essentially our students that are identified as English language learners are immersed in classrooms that utilize English as the predominant means for instruction, supported by English as a second language teachers to help students acquire English language. Our instructional model now consists of two full-time ESL teachers, where we have one dedicated to the elementary level and another to the secondary level. We, we have changed our model just a bit this year. Traditionally, it's been more of a pull-out model where our students receive some of their English language instruction individually or in small groups, depending upon their English language learning level. But we've been exploring now push-in models, particularly at the high school, where we have the opportunity through the students that we're servicing to be able to go actually into their English class and provide direct support in the classroom for, for these students. In addition to supporting students that are identified with what the state would call limited English proficiency, we're also responsible for supporting students that have been recently re-designated as fluent in English, where when students achieve a certain level score, which off the top of my head, I think it's a four-point-two on the access exam, which is the English proficiency exam that our ELL students take, once they reach a score of four-point-two and we feel that our local data supports this, we transition these students to being defined as formally being limited English proficiency, and we are legally required to monitor those students for a couple of years after they have received that designation to ensure that their English language proficiency continues to grow. So, we're not only supporting the students that are identified with limited proficiency, we're still supporting our students that are, have been recently identified as fluent in English. Our current program is serving Our current program is serving 43 students, but that number is actually increasing. We've had some new families join our community, and we're working with those new families to become part of our community, both in the community as a whole and within our schools. This split is about a 70/30 split, of 70% of those students being identified as limited English proficient, and about 30% re-designated as fluent in English. We serve many languages. You can see here Arabic, Cape Verdean Creole, Creole, French, Gujarati, Greek, Haitian Creole, Hmong, Portuguese, Russian, Spanish, Urdu, and Vietnamese. Our languages have expanded over time. More often than not, we were more supporting students that had Spanish as a first language. Portuguese has now started to be on, on the rise for us. But our, our population is growing, and our language needs are growing with that. Just a little bit about some of our more immediate program goals. We are continuing to enhance our English as a second language curriculum. Our students, depending upon their level, their English language level, determines the, the type of instr, language instruction they need to receive. So it's important that we not only provide them with interventions to support them in their core academic classes, we have to provide instruction that allows them to acquire English. That's not something that's only dependent upon our ESL teachers. It's, it's incumbent upon all of the teachers that support those students directly to help them acquire English. And that is why teachers now are required to earn a sheltered English instruction endorsement for their license. We're also working to foster deeper connections with our families. We find that the more we can connect with our English language learner families, the better we're able to support our students, and obviously, that goes for all students. But we find that these families, if they're new to our community, need to be, feel welcomed into our community and supported. We will be holding our first English language learner parent night next month, and we're hoping to receive many of our families and, and meet them in person and help support them and their child. We are transitioning to online access testing, so much like we transitioned to online testing for MCAS, we're also doing the same for access for students in grades three and higher. And that could extend up through 12th grade, so it's not like MCAS where you reach 10th grade, and, you know, as long as you're deemed proficient, you don't have to test anymore. Students are tested annually to ensure that within six years, they achieve English proficiency, which is the goal. And we are also beginning a more formal program evaluation in accordance with the expectation from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. That, the curriculum piece, really came out of the, the coordinated program review that had been conducted last year. So I wanted to thank our two new ESL teachers, Mr. Christian Cardoza and Ms. Megan Riley. Christian works at the elementary, and Megan is at the secondary level, and I will tell you, they have formed quite a bond and are quite a strong team. I'm actually meeting with them tomorrow. We meet pretty regularly, supported by Mr. Car, John Cardoza, who, yes, he did retire, but he is still with us here, supporting us in our transition, as our needs to grow our ESL program are quite evident. I'm happy.
Just to clarify, you did not, not with your party?
Yes, that's correct. And, you know, maybe we're not sure we'll ever let him go, because he's, he's just such a.
He's not going to return, of course.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That was, that was a fake party.
But they can fake it at the time.
He's an extremely valuable asset for not only his abilities to support our English language learner students and their families, but he just has such a wealth of experience as an educator, and he's just such a good human being, that I enjoy being able to collaborate with him, whether it's formally or informally. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about our English language learner program. I did not go into depth due to the fact that this is a smaller population, and I'm trying to make sure that nothing that is discussed would identify any of our students in any way, but I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Hi, Dr. Gates. I had two questions. The first one might be a little silly, but how do students become known to the, the ESL program? Is, is that just a teacher notices that they're struggling and says, "You should go here," or how does that work?
When all students register, all students and their families are required to complete a home language survey, and that is really our first effort to be able to identify if there's any language needs for those students. But then also, recommendations can, can come in through teachers, because sometimes our families do not wish to be identified in such a way. They can actually opt out of English language support if they so choose, but when we receive our home language surveys, we review them, and if a second language is identified for the student or within the home, we then conduct a screener. So that, really, the first 30 days of, of a school year are quite busy. You think there's a lot of assessment for, in our school systems currently, but within the English language learner program, I feel like it's, it's definitely amplified. Where all of the students have to be screened, based upon the outcome of that screener will determine if they would enter into the English language learner program, and then, as I stated, families do have the opportunity to opt out, and that does happen. And we have to respect the, the wishes of our families.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Dr. Gates, the last question I have is, how do we handle a situation in which a family has a language issue that we essentially don't have access to? You know, somebody speaks a language that there is no one in our district that speaks that language, or can, you know, you know what I mean?
Well, to be quite frank, our ESL teachers do not speak any of these languages, but they have intensive training to help them, help our, our students and our families acquire English. When there is such a communication barrier, we have to really pull out all resources for translated documentation, as well as having translators available as needed. And that's actually part of the home language survey, where they respond that they want written communications in English or in their native language, and if they require interpretive services, whether it's for an IEP meeting or parent-teacher conferences, and it's incumbent upon us to provide that for our families, and we do so.
Thank you. Another question?
Sorry, I had another one. I, I think I understood in the beginning that pull-out and push-in was, was kind of talking about kids are either removed from class and, and doing other types of classes, but if, if a family doesn't want necessarily to be just openly known as, as needing this type of help, what does that look like when the kid's in classes? Is it something extra after school, or is it during lunch, or how does that work?
If the family opts out, then they opt out of being for, part of a formal program. But obviously, regardless of they opt out, opt in, whatever it is, we do our best to support our students in any way. So because they have opted out, they are not receiving direct support from our ESL teachers. It doesn't mean that they're not available for support. What we have typically seen is the families that do opt out is because that they feel that they are acquiring English language on their own, and they feel confident in their abilities with that. And again, we respect that decision of our families.
And for you, Mr. Chair, we also place those children in rooms where we know we have teachers who have been trained, and in a room also where that ESL, ESL teacher will go into that room and help out those other students, but in doing so, will naturally be helping that, not direct, but, or directly, but it would be, we'll try to help that student in any indirect way we can, so.
All this is private.
Knows, like you said earlier, no one knows who they are, which is good, so.
Yeah, much like, much like our freedom.
And reduced lunch program. I would also say that, that Dr. Gates alluded to the fact that we did have some pushback from the state in our coordinating program review with regard to a specific curriculum, and with regard to an evaluation piece. Both of those have been addressed through the new model, and they are working, but I would also note that we did get a, a gold star last year. We were noted as having a program that graduated every single one of our ESL students, 100% graduation rate in Middleborough Public Schools. So by the time they took the MCAS and they graduated, they, they all graduated, so, and we talked about the retirement party last year for Mr. Cardoza, which did occur. He had one of his students do a speech during that ceremony, which was quite touching, about how she was assisted by him, and, and now was working in a bank as an interpreter for, for a community, and was highly regarded in that, in that financial institution. So kudos to that. So there are, we have been, you know, we were criticized for a couple of things, which we've addressed, and we've also had gold stars, which hopefully we'll continue with, so.
Other questions for Dr. Gates? Dr. Gates will now.
The homeschool update, which she's, is another area that she is the coordinator of.
I've had the good fortune of supporting our homeschool program for the last six years. Prior to that, Mrs. Anita Rodriguez had provided leadership for this program. We currently support 62 homeschooled students, and again, due to confidentiality, that's the extent to which student data can be divulged, but I'd like to share with you what our procedures are for, for homeschool. These procedures do align with the home, with the homeschool policy that you have all adopted. Our families are required to submit an annual notice of intent to pursue home education, and as per the, the policy, it's expected that our, our applicants describe their curriculum, the qualifications of the individual providing instruction, which is typically the parents, and what the means of evaluation are. Once I receive that written notice, and I, you know, for flexibility purposes with our families, I do allow them to have digital communications with me. I respond always officially in writing. I have 10 days to respond to the receipt of a notice. Once that notice is received, I review it and make sure that the required information is there, and if there are any glaring issues, that we communicate between myself and the families. However, you know, Mass General Law really puts the onus of responsibility for home education on the shoulders of the parents, and they have the decisions to decide on what the curriculum is, what the means of instruction are, and the means of assessment. I really consider myself as a resource for families, to help them make decisions, to support what they feel is in the best interest of their child. So once I receive that notice and I review it, if there's any clarification that's needed, I work with the families to provide that, and then once I approve the plan, I respond in writing. I actually try to process both at the same time, to save us a little postage, because I do, they, I do require formal written notice to our families. Once the plan is approved and families are enacting their plan, it's expected at the end of their school year, which their school year is, can be all year long. It can end in May and start in August. It's the flexibility of the families deciding on what's in the best interest of their child. They submit the agreed-upon evaluation evidence. I, I review that evidence, and either return it to the families if they wish, or we retain them here within our records. It's been great to get to know our homeschool families. I've actually learned quite a bit through reviewing their plans and seeing the evidence of the students' work, and I hope that our homeschool families do feel supported, because they also are still part of our community, which means that they're still part of, you know, every student, every classroom, every day. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about homeschool.
I do want to bring up a couple of things. One is, Melanie, I know you've done a really good job with homeschooling. My personal experience has been sort of homeschooling revolves around groups, because the groups of homeschooling parents sort of work together and help each other out. I am aware of a group, especially when I was, ran the soccer program in town, and so I got to know a group very well. They always had good things to say about the relationship with you, but more importantly than that, we really worked hard to make sure they understood that there are opportunities for homeschooling students that they may not be aware of, like they can play sports after school for the middle school and the high school. And the other piece is, for some parents, there are pieces that they don't have the ability to do. For example, I know in the past, from talking to some of the parents, it was language, or it was chemistry or physics, and so the school worked really hard to make sure a student could start out taking one course at Middleborough High School in, in physics or language. And what that really revolved around was getting the kids into school and being a part of the school, and for a lot of them, and for the group I particularly knew, most of the parents, most of the parents sent them to the high school, because they got to know it, got to like it, got to enjoy it, had a different perspective of the high school after having been there. And I think the number would have been higher for those numbers that you had, had we not sort of tried to reach out to them and say, "These are opportunities that you can have." And I know those parents have spoken to other homeschooling parents and said, "Those opportunities exist, and please take advantage of them." So I want to thank you for that.
I think, I think we've seen a bit of an uptick in that, particularly our homeschool students participating in athletics, taking programming, as you said, foreign language, our lab-based sciences, and we have seen some of our homeschool families transition into our school, not only at the high school. We've actually had some families that have transitioned now back into our elementary and into our, our middle school. And, you know, families have been making more requests to gain access to resources, as is supported by the, the homeschool committee policy for homeschool, and I think it's just been great. I think they're understanding that we, we do feel committed to every child's education, and we're here to serve in any way that we can, and hopefully that through our dedicated service and support, they, they recognize that we do provide a high-quality experience for all students, and that they wish to, to join us full-time and, and become a greater part of our Middleborough Public School family.
I, I was just curious how the, how a student that is homeschooled plays into the, the funding that we get from the state for, for educating students. Is it the same amount as, as any other, or?
If they're not on our October 1st report, then I do not believe we receive any state funding for them. If they are receiving services, if they are enrolled in a class at the high school, then they are on the October 1st report, but I would kindly defer to the more expert in the room than myself when it comes to school funding, if Mrs. Hickey feels so inclined to contribute.
What you have said is completely accurate. So the October 1st enrollment figures, that's where the funding comes, and if a student is homeschooled, they're not enrolled.
It basically goes without saying, or is clearly evident, that these programs are in good hands with, with Dr. Gates, so thank you very much for your presentation and your ongoing admission, administration. We now move on to the budget update, and you're gonna receive your, your first budget update from Ms. Sarah Hickey, so.
I apologize if it's not extremely exciting. The, I sent an email out to the leadership team last week explaining that starting, well, starting next week, I would only be approving essential spending out of the operational budget, so essentially, we can call it a budget freeze. I'm trying to get a handle on where we're at budget-wise, and I explained to the leadership team in a meeting yesterday that, that it was similar to trying to measure the level of the water in a bathtub with the drain open. So for the time that I've been here, there's just been money going out, money going out, money going out, and so, starting Monday, that's going to slow down dramatically, and I expect, and I'll be able to get a good sense of what's going on financially with the district.
Thank you. And after July 1, we start spending for the following year, and by this time, my, and I shared with the Administrative Council, that we should have everything we need for this year, unless it's something that's essential as we move on. So in terms of supply items, technology, books, workbooks, anything that we have or need, or technology, should be purchased at this time already. And then we freeze it, we cut it, and we say, "Okay, then we can make it, have an accounting, and really move forward with looking at making sure the budget's balanced moving forward, and what we can and cannot spend, so." And that concludes my report, unless there are any questions.
Any questions for Mrs. Hickey about the budget at all? It's pretty straightforward. I think this has been done essentially around this time.
Yes.
Since I've been on the committee. We tend, generally tend to do this, to take an assessment.
Any, thank you, Superintendent. Next item in the agenda is MSBA update. So we're moving towards the 100% submission. I do want to say a couple of things. One, I think all day at One, I think all day at, at the homecoming day on Saturday, I had a field questions. We are not starting digging at the high school. That rig was to put wells in the high school. So we were graciously given money from the Pierce trustees to put a new well system in the high school that will be part of the new athletic complex. And that is not, but, you know, not a burden on the taxpayer at all, nor does it come out of the, the building money. It was just an addition that the Pierce trustees allowed us and did, and so we're thankful for that. So that is what that digging is. But we are moving towards, we are pre-qualifying people. We, the only areas in which we did not receive multiple people interested in was elevator and terrazzo. And so elevator and terrazzo are being re-sent out again to the field there so people know we are going to be in that process. And so the hope that we get multiple bidders on those pieces. And that's not something that, that's not an unusual occurrence for those two particular pieces. It usually requires a, sort of a little more send-out, if you will, to let people know and to get them to pre-qualify for the bidding. We established a pre-qualification committee that will be working on that. And that pre-qualification committee is our OPM, our project, our architect, our director of facilities, and Mr. DeRoges, who's the chair of the committee. And they will be doing pre-qualifications on contractors and subcontractors to make sure that they meet a certain requirement. We can block people from bidding if we don't think they meet certain requirements, but there's a, essentially a, a system that you have to go through and a review process for each and every one. They're supposed to submit data beforehand that we can take a look at. And if they don't meet those requirements, we can block them for bidding. So. The other thing I should say, we had, we recently, and yesterday's meeting, which is, should be online, if not today, it should be online tomorrow. One of the things that we talked about, one of the highlights was the conversation about the turf field that we picked. And the, we decided to do a shock, shock pad. Shock pad greatly helps reduce injuries to students. So we are paying extra money for a shock pad, but we think it's well worth it. And the turf, one of the things I think is important, because I heard the question, I know Brian has, people came to us and said they had heard sort of that turf fields cause cancer in children. And that's not the case. But there is a lot of misinformation out there. And we believe that our field expert sort of answered all those questions for us and led, and also told people where they could go to find additional information. And so if people have those concerns, I would really recommend watching it. It's, it's very early in the process and that they can take a look at that themselves if they have. And the other big thing that we did was we added another proprietary piece for security, which will be the overall security of the building. And we made that proprietary because it met requirements that we have, requirements that the police and fire have too.
And everyone was involved with that decision?
Yeah.
The dirt team, police, the fire, everyone, which is a good thing.
And so proprietary means just a particular company can bid it.
And Mr. Chair, we also removed some items from the regular budget and moved them to the top of the alt, the bid alternate list. So it would give us a little bit more breathing room in terms of the budget because although we are under budget, it is about thirty-five thousand dollars under the total. So we want to create some additional breathing room with the understanding that if there's money at the end of the program, those will be returned to the budget and be part of the, a part of the larger proposal, part of the program.
And some things were taken out of the, I mean, there's been additional things taken out of the budget because we've made a decision. People had said to us, we should do this. And we were like, no, we're not doing that. We think that's too expensive. And we, we, we have rationales with every reason. But again, it's not a question of, it's, it's a question of, I'm kind of-
Please, please excuse the interruption.
How money could be better spent?
On behalf of the technical staff, I'd like to thank you all for coming tonight. It's eight twenty-five. We've got about five more minutes left in the night so that you can begin to wrap up your conversations with the teachers so they can go home and get some rest because they can do that right and early to teach your kids tomorrow. Thanks so much for coming out tonight. Have a safe ride home and a wonderful weekend. Take care.
With all due respect to Mr. Thomas, that does not apply to school committee members.
And Mr. Chair, so, so the items that were removed were put into this alternate list that will be added back in once the bids come in, hopefully. And I think the other item that was added to that alt list officially was that the lighting was potentially, but that's way down the bottom. And potentially for additional insulation, which could increase the, our value of the entire building, not required under the, because we're still lead, lead silver.
Yes.
But this could be something that if the money is available and the bids come out right and it's worth it.
About three more inches of back insulation.
Yeah. So that was, that really cool.
I, I should put in one thing that we found out really yesterday that is, is again, maybe something we need to have a conversation with our legislators. We are allowed, we are allowed to get, as a school system, get discounts for various pieces that we buy through, what's the program, Brian?
M A G C, Mass Higher Ed. Council, consortium.
So depending on what, for example, what we buy, we get a discount. The discount does not apply to contractors building the school. So they do not get the same discount. And so if you will, there are pieces that, and part of the reason is because it becomes who's putting them in, those type of things. So it just gets to be a little messy. So, you know, we've been looking at some things and realizing that why is the price so high? And we're realizing now that a part of it is because they can't get that discount that we were like, well, wait a minute, we know, you know, when we have, we sit down and have a conversation with somebody who presents to us, we know it costs this, but you're charging a little more. And then we're finding out why. So it's those type of things that sometimes drive you crazy. And so, for example, one of the pieces that we know about is it's our belief, I'll say it's my belief, I don't want to speak for anybody else, but it's my belief that it would be important to take the varsity baseball field and the varsity softball field and put lighting on them so that there's more opportunities. They can play games at night, the community can play games at night, things like that. Unfortunately for us, we're bound by a situation in which we're going to have to pay outside rates to put up lighting. So included in the plans is to make it, to make every connection going there that would put up lighting. I think there are some of us who believe that we are better off doing it later with, involving the community and Middleborough Gas and Electric because we think the price tag will be a lot less than we're being quoted. But we still want to put it in there so that if there is money available, we can take a look at it and see what happens. And maybe it's viewed in a different way. So those are the things, those are the things we run into and issues that spring up from time and time again. So, any other questions about that? So, yes, sir.
I, I heard something earlier about the, the track and how it might be affected by the, the construction schedule. Is, is that right? Are we losing the, the track for, for a time? Yeah?
So we lose, so.
Current track.
Current track.
Yeah.
So we lose, we lose current track. Everything out and back at the high school is gone as of winter time.
Is there any, any possibility to, to replace that? Or is it just, once the school's done, it comes back?
But there, we're going to be without a track for a couple of years. So we'll be borrowing and working with the folks at Aponequit and Carver and Bridgewater State, hopefully, to partner up with them to find practice time and also meet time. And doing a lot of away meets, unfortunately. Instead of every other meet being home, we might be away more often.
Multi-use field, sports arena, field or stadium, for lack of a better word, the, that is, if you look at, if you go to the website and you look at the plans, there is a scheduling where how, how, you know, when these things will be built. That field is getting built, I think, earlier than some of the other stuff. So are we going to be two, one and a half seasons without that field and track? I think it's one and a half seasons. So.
I was under the impression there was two full track seasons, but I, I, I could be wrong.
Well, no, it's also the potential, if you remember, we may open, but the potential exists that we need the, the fire, the fire egress around and we may not be able to complete the track when it opens. So the, the inside of the stadium could still be open, but the track around may have a small piece off that we can allow fire access to. Just related to that, and I think it's important to remember, so if you think about this fall season, okay, we have a cross-country team, we have soccer teams, we have field hockey teams, and obviously football practice is here. But going into next year, they can't practice behind the facilities. So we're going to have to increase costs to our busing because they're going to have to go places to either practice or have games. And so I think, you know, this is, this is one of the costs we knew going in that would be an additional cost for us because we, you know, we're building behind it. Next up on the agenda is consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda is, is presented.
Do I a second? Discussion? Hearing none, I'll send papers. Aye. It's approved.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I thought we were going to do donkey basketball.
Yeah, the superintendent and I have some serious disagreements over that one.
Okay.
But, and, but I think we may have to just force our will on that.
It may be a liability issue, Mr. Chair.
I don't believe there's ever been a liability issue with donkey basketball. It's a, it's a fun, exciting sport that is just not played in this, these parts enough.
Perhaps with the donkeys.
Next up is M A S C. Mr. Oakley asked if we could have a conversation about the resolutions. And so I believe the resolutions were put in your Dropbox, so thank you. I don't know if, I'll go over each resolution and you guys can tell me if you want to discuss them. We had given me the authority to make decisions based on, obviously, the conversation at the committee. But I, I would obviously like, be welcome to your particular input and go from there. The first resolution is rejecting the arming of educators. Does anyone wish to speak about that? Mr. Cuttino, do you have any? Thank you, Mr. Cuttino. Seeing none, I'm going to move on. The second is one that has been really a piece that, to be honest with you, I've pushed one of, part of the resolutions committee is I know two members of the resolution committee really well, Kim Hunt, she's the chairman of the Plymouth School Committee, and Jason Frazier, he's at the Plimpton School Committee. I've known them in the past. This is about smaller rural districts. And to my mind, this really applies to us, which is a lot of times, when things come down from the state, the state will address issues that they believe really affect cities rather than affect us. So perfect example is lunch programs. They had put out the program at the, several years ago, that went to cities first, which is about attempting to do free lunch all the time for all students. You know, we know we have schools with over fifty percent on free and reduced lunch. And in some cases, we are higher than some of the schools in the city. And you can't just put money towards certain areas. They have to be open to everybody whom they make sense to be open to. And so this resolution is really around the idea of that, you know, they can't be splits like that. There can't be splits just for cities. They have to take into account what's going on in communities and rural districts and making sure that they're included. And in some cases, they're a part of it. And so that's what this resolution is important to. So anyone want to discuss that? Okay. The next one was the elimination of the Federal Department of Education.
Person running.
Well, yeah, I'll give you that. This talks about, there's a current idea to merge the Department of Ed with the Department of Labor. And that the Massachusetts, you know, combining the, to reject the notion of combining the agencies because labor and education are two distinctly different entities and need to be represented, especially on the federal level. Resolution number four doesn't really apply to us other than it could, in this sense, which is it's regional schools transportation.
I, I agree with what you've, you've got here, but I just was wondering, could that affect us? Could we, could we find a way to maybe lower our cost on those over and above our regular mini-bus transportations? I mean, could, could we find, like Gatra?
Mr. Chair, this is very specific to regional school trans. So the Bridgewater Rainhams of the world, Dyton Rehobus, so they operate as a separate entity. They have different regulations budget-wise and et cetera, too.
Transportation authorities, but it is, it does say regional school districts. I thought it was more like the use of like Gatra as a transportation provider, but it does say regional school districts.
And the problem becomes is how they can bid those contracts. And so this is a change to allow them to bid the contracts and make them more competitive. And so I think that makes sense. I mean, the one thing that, that could come down is there could be a situation in which, depending on what's going on, you could have multiple school entities at some point bidding contracts together as a group, saying, you know, now, instead of just the Middleborough route, Middleborough and Lakeville would join together for bidding contracts so that we could get a better, a better bid because you're offering more, more opportunities. So.
That would be a different resolution.
Right, no, absolutely. But I mean, like I said, it's how, how things transpire. Resolution number five is reporting and accountability standards. And what this is saying is outside school entity, non-public school entities that take public money in any way, shape, or form should have to conform to the same standards that we do. And so they should have to take MCAS and they should have to take all, everything that we're required to take for our students to their students for accountability. Resolution six is on reproductive health for students.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I got to tell you, when I read this one, I, I had to almost chuckle a little bit because I went back to my, my days in high school. I went to an all-boys Catholic high school and I did take a religion class. In one of my religion classes, we discussed this. And the best thing that this, this teacher had to say was, okay, this is what the church says, but let's be real. And we discussed all the items that we're talking about, making sure that we have full education in all these subject matters in a public school. And I say to myself, we did in a Catholic school, so if the Catholics can do it and we did, we better be doing it in our school to make sure everyone's educated. So that's how, how I feel about it personally. And I think a lot of people feel that way.
And we've also, we've also had this discussion previously about the idea, and we've even looked at adding health curriculum as part of the phys ed. It just hasn't been able to work it out money-wise yet. This has been a program that Paul's put forward a couple of times in his budget to try to add to those pieces. And it, you know, obviously this falls into that piece, but, you know, it has been something that we've looked at and been a part of. And I think, like any of these, it's, it's the idea that you can't make us do this stuff without giving us additional resources to do it. And so I think that's, that's, well, I mean, that's always been the M A S S, M A S C piece in their petition. So any questions about the reproductive health piece? The next up was gender identity include, inclusive athletic participation policy. So I think, you know, there's been a lot of talk about this. We, we've had constant conversations about this particular piece for the new high school. And we're addressing it in how we do with the new high school. I will also say that I think in some instances in athletics, athletics offer, the athletic piece has been tough. I mean, not even for gay and lesbian youth, but just for participation of alternate sex in, in, in sports that they, you know, they wanted to. For example, I believe it was last year, Brian, there was a young lady who participated on the boys' golf team, did very well for her school, made the MIA tournament, and the MIA refused to allow her to participate because she, she couldn't participate in the boys' tournament. They wanted her to participate in the girls' tournament.
She actually played in the boys' tournament and won.
Yeah.
Beat every male golfer outright.
Yeah.
Playing from, playing from the men's tees. And they refused to award her the trophy because it was a men's tournament and the women's tournament is in the fall, in the spring, excuse me. But that was a bone of contention statewide and that has really sort of stirred things up at the M- really sort of stirred things up with the MIA with regard to much more vigilance on the part of principals and school superintendents becoming more involved in the process where it was. So that, that definitely has been addressed, and will continue to be addressed.
But I also saw that athletics has been an area where there's, you know, it moves slowly at times.
And we've allowed, we had, we had a young man that played on our, our field hockey team last year, and quite successfully.
Any question about that? Okay. Then, resolution eight is sports wagering. So for those who don't know, sports wagering became illegal under the Supreme Court. Many states, there are currently three states that have full, no, actually, I take that back. There are eight states that currently have full sports wagering. Right now, there are additional states in the loop. I know Massachusetts is looking at it. And so M A S C's perspective is if Massachusetts allows sports wagering, then the money derived from there should go to edu, a piece of it should go to education. And so, and any questions about that? Okay. Access to information for parents and students who are clients of special education. Now, this one was really interesting, because I didn't realize this. What they were saying was essentially because of HIPAA laws, when they do testing, they can't mail the testing home to parents or students. They have to physically give it to them. So I just throw that out there. And I didn't realize that. And so this would allow school districts to send material home to parents, and wouldn't require parents to have to come in and get material.
The concern that I had with this one was that mailing it out in the preferred language at least five days in advance, I just want to make sure it doesn't, would commit to a burden to the, the district.
Through you, Mr. Chair, that would be a planning piece that would have to be in place for our PPS department. I think it's doable. It, it involves costs. It's a mandate, obviously, that if it's approved. But it does, I think it's preferable. We provide report cards in their native language. We provide MCAS reports in their native language. We were pride, we're required to provide every public report to them in their native language. So I have no, I have, I personally don't, professionally don't have an issue with this, but it would, it would be something that does, will incur some costs along the way.
Cool. Any other questions about that? Then the final one is proposed to amend the M A S C bylaws. The bylaws currently state that resolutions need to be in by July 1st. They just want to move it to June 1st, primarily because, to be honest with you, they would prefer to get these booklets out to people over the summertime, so that there could be, and by getting them out over the summertime, they run into a problem this way, which is, they, they do do resolution sort of workshops for people who want to learn about the resolutions. And so they really have to send this out in September, and so they can't do those resolution workshops until really end of September, October. And so the thought that they've had is make, being able to put them out end of June, early July, and actually start that process in August, so that, you know, some people could go to those over the summertime, as opposed to go to them in the middle of school year. So I think that's it. Any other questions? Mr. Oakley?
Mr. Chair, this is more of just a comment. I just want to thank the, the committee for, for listening through those. I have to admit, I was kind of thrown by some of the titles of those when I first read it. I'm very much in agreement with this, with all of these things. And I, I hope that me asking the question allowed some people at home to, to know a little bit more about it, but thank you.
Yeah, I don't have any, you know, we don't have, it's something new and different, and we can continue to do that. I, I think that's actually what makes sense and lets people know what we're going to be talking about at our conferences.
But also, I think that now the chair really has, you know, we, he gets a feel for us, but he now knows how we pretty much feel. And some of us may be on different sides of things, but how we all feel. It's a good thing.
Any other questions about that before I move on? We're still working on workshop on operation protocols, and we will have the policy subcommittee meeting I still need to get through.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just a point of order. At the last meeting, did you end up voting to support you and your?
Yes.
Or, or did you want to wait till this was discussed, and then?
What we did was we voted to, I was the delegate. We voted to allow me to make decisions at the conference. And then that came up afterwards. So I really don't think there needs to be a change.
No, because what we did, we voted for him to be able to do it, and then we would discuss it, and he'd have our feeling, and it's, he'd be voting.
Just wanted to make sure that. Was not something we missed, that's all.
That leads right, right into the action item, and I did put into the piece about the National School Boards Association Conference for Public Education Leaders, March 30th through April 1st. The reason I put this in, just so everyone understands, is our conference really runs Thursday through Saturday, which, for a good number of people on our committee, makes it impossible for them to go. The 30th through the 1st is a weekend conference. It's the second time in six years it's been on the East Coast. The last time it was in Boston, so it was really easy to go to and be a part of. I will say this, that I just realized today marks my fifth year on this committee and my 11th year as an elected school committee member. By far and away, when I went to the Boston conference, it was, it was the best conference I had ever attended in my life, and as far as for school committee, and it offered great opportunities to have conversations with people around the country, and understand issues that they went through were somewhat similar to what we go through, and ideas that came up, and hearing about different pieces and ideas that we were able to bring forward and have conversations with people about. And so I, again, we really spend a lot of time doing, doing, encouraging people to get professional development for teachers and administrators and staff. And I think we also have to allow opportunities for us to get professional development. So I did want to bring this up. We hadn't taken, we would need to take a vote to allow people to do that. Brian asked for the.
Five thousand bucks.
Right, the inclusions to be in there. I put it in. I, I don't think it's unreasonable. I, it's, I think, an $800 if you get by a certain date.
By January 15th.
And given other conferences, you know, if you go to professional conferences, that's not an unreasonable amount of money. So I'm open to any questions that people have.
I think it's a worthy conference.
And again, this is only if people can attend.
Right. Mr. Chair, we, we, as a school committee before, some, some of us were elected, but we as a school committee back in 13, 2013, 2014, we were really looking at ourselves to become more efficient, become better school committee members. We did a lot of work back then. And when we, we don't just require, we require everyone who works for the school district to get professional development, every single person. The custodial staff gets professional development, everyone does, and we ourselves need to do it. And by law, we're supposed to, I think, six hours a year or something like that, or, or whatnot, and that's by statute. So this is an incredible opportunity to get that and bring back and even network with some people from outside of the area. I'd, I'd love to get, get together with people from Maryland who are very similar makeup, other than they only have 20 school districts or 25 school districts, but they do, yeah, by county. But it would be, be an interesting piece to really network with people from outside of our area on certain things. So I think it's a great opportunity for whoever gets to attend or can attend.
And to put it in perspective, one of the best workshops I went to, I went, Glenn Kutcher, who's the executive director of M A S C, and myself, attended a workshop that was run by school board members from Alaska. And it was on the role of the student as part of the school committee, and what they did, and what they were able to do, and they established a conference. So as you note, this is the first year that M A S C established a conference for youth school committee members, and got them to come, be able to come together and be a part of it. And that came directly from that conference. And that, you know, we, quite honestly, were blown away at what they were able to do, and given, you can imagine the hurdles they have getting, trying to get students together. So they've actually had to quadrant off the state and do it that way, as opposed to one in the center of the state.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I believe that we approved the, the ability for stu, school committee members to attend the NSBA 2019 conference.
Do your second. Discussion. Anybody else have any comments they wish to me? Hearing no others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you, everybody. I really appreciate it. So we'll, I'll send out a note to everybody. If people are interested, let me know, and we can figure it out.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Under other?
Under donations, can we put that on the agenda for next time? I forgot to mention it at the beginning of the meeting, the item one. That's, that's, that's pretty, that's pretty cool.
Yeah.
If you would, yeah.
No, no problem. We.
Thank you. I forgot to mention it.
We just got the information, so we will be bringing up. Anybody have anything else they want to bring up? I'd just like to remind people that we're meeting November 15th, which I believe is the third Thursday of the month, is it not? Yes. So it's a little different than what we said, because the second would be during, during the conference. So, Mr. Oakley?
Mr. Chair, I just want to apologize in advance. I will not be able to make that. Be celebrating my anniversary around that time, out of, out of state, but anyway.
Congratulations. Any further comment? Then the chair will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Do your second. There's no discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you very much, everybody.